We are recording.
Ready?
Still got two minutes.
I didn't see it.
Oh.
Still got two minutes. He's just early.
Just trying to get, get it done before Justin shows.
Yeah.
Justin said he was leaving exactly at 5:00 PM to come here.
Hmm. It's not Justin.
No.
I guess the newspaper guy quit his quiz.
Yeah.
Must not have anybody.
Kevin can earn some side money. No. You can report for WSJD and your side money would be for the newspaper.
Do they not have a rep yet?
Uh-uh. Not that I'm aware of.
It's five o'clock.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Find a spot in amongst all the papers' plans. Roll call, Mr. Turner. Ugh, can't even talk with this thing. I almost said.
Mayor Judge.
Here.
Commissioner Meeks, absent. Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Dogger, absent. Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
All right. I need approval of minutes of meeting held on September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. All right. Visitors, Maxwell Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mayor. I am Maxwell Zimmerman. I am here on behalf of Walgreens Valley Student Senate. We are going to be asking for approval of collecting money at the intersection this year for our annual food drive.
Okay.
We'll be, we're asking to be at the intersections of College and Thirteenth and Cherry and Fifth from eight AM to twelve PM on Saturday, November sixth.
Okay. And I assume with you being with the college, everybody will be eighteen and over?
Yes.
Okay. And then get with Mr. Turner on the reflective vests and stuff like that. That's one of the requirements, so. Does anybody else have any issues, questions?
Good for me.
All right.
I think it's a good cause.
Yes, great cause. All right. You're good to go. Thank you very much. Terry Boyer. Want me to do it later or now?
Why don't we do this later?
Okay.
After the ordinance.
Okay. Sounds good. Pat Gould with HLR.
Hello, I'm Pat Gould with HLR. Did the sidewalk project upgrades from, on Oak Street, from Fourth to Ninth Street. We had the bid opening on October twelfth, which was last Tuesday. There were three or four plan holders. We had one bid. It was Kiefer Brothers Construction. And their bid amount was five hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents. If you're not aware of the grant, this is a revolving loan fund payback grant. I believe that amount was about three hundred and ninety-five thousand for the grant. There are deadline stipulations. Has to be constructed by January thirty-first to twenty-two.
It has to be under construction by December first, and then we can ask for an extension for the twenty-twenty-two year, so.
So there is about a hundred and fifty thousand over the grant amount. There was going forward in order to meet that deadline, the December one deadline, really need to make the decision this evening. There's three options. I recommend, not recommend, but just put out for you guys to consider. First option would be just do not accept the bid and do not do a rebid or anything and just lose the four hundred thousand dollar grant. Option two would be similar to that, but just rebid it. But in order to rebid, you'd have, we've got to reduce the scope of the project. That would take approval through DCEO, and that could take little as two to three weeks and as much as six months. That if part of the project were to take out would be the Fifth Street portion, crossing the ditch. That would be about a hundred to a hundred, or a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand savings. But if we don't meet that December one deadline, which I believe is a hard deadline, the, you're losing four hundred thousand. There would be additional engineering fees with that, very minimal. Option three would be accept the low bid and cover the additional cost of the project, some means, and that would allow the construction to start by December one, so get the funds and then have the sidewalk built with a dependent.
Ryan and I have met with Pat and Mike Gitcomb over this, and when we originally started down this road with this project several years ago, probably two and a half, three years ago, we added in the Fifth Street project because at the time, the engineering was coming back below the three ninety-seven. That's the only reason we added it to the project's scope of work. And when it was submitted, it was submitted to Locust Street on Fifth with a walking bridge and everything else along with the sidewalk down through there. And then, well, say inflation or just the rising costs of material and labor, fast forward to last week, and it has, you know, blossomed to a basically a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit, or not deficit, in the red. But anyway, the other portion of the project that we've already had HLR design, because they had to design it for the permits, was the Fourth to Third. We couldn't go after that in this scope of work and this grant because it's in a floodplain, but we could use TIF funds for that area. So what I'm proposing is, out of that TIF one, I believe, Mr. Turner, am I correct?
Yes.
Um, that, um, we move forward with getting the Third to Fourth bid out and, but then use a hundred and fifty thousand out of TIF to finalize that project because I talked to the lady at DCEO and her boss also, and then Greater Wabash, and like Pat said, we got two choices. Either we lose the funds or we spend the money out of TIF, in which we have the money in TIF for that area.
I, I need to add with the TIF that we're pulling this fund, the funds from, this TIF has expired, so those funds, from the recommendation of attorneys that were up at IML, is we need to use the funds on a project that fits the scope, and this, after reviewing everything, this does definitely fit the scope. We currently have five hundred, over five hundred thousand in that TIF. But, I mean, that sounds like a lot, but obviously a hundred and fifty thousand could be used, and we still have enough to finish a project at Snap-on and to assist motor rat, which you guys have already voted upon. We would, with all those projects, we'd still cover with that funding.
You know, I think it's important to note, this does go back at least two and a half years, if not longer.
Yep.
You know, this money was from the revolving loan fund and designated for this, but it was also had to be in a certain census tract in the city.
Yes.
So it could only be used in a very certain area, which that was why this project was chosen. I think it's probably important to note for a refresher for anybody that wasn't around at that time or, or didn't recall. It had to be in an income census tract that met the state's requirements. So it couldn't just be put anywhere, and we couldn't just use that money anywhere in the city to, to develop something.
Right, and they only allowed us two, up to two projects, but had a big emphasis on spending it all on one project, so.
So these won't come out of, like, the general budget or anything? Could that affect?
The what now?
The extra, the overage will not come out of the general budget, it'll come out of the TIF, correct?
Right, yes.
It is expiring and needs to be.
It is expired, but we do need to use those.
So we're able to use them even if it's expired?
Yeah. We have a timeframe after the TIF expires to use the money.
Basically, when it says it expired, it just means it's no longer taking in those funds from that area.
If we don't use them, we'd, at some point, whenever that time TIF is due, we'll have to return them to the taxi bodies.
Yep.
And also, I'd like to note that Commissioner Dogger has been in approximately two minutes to the meeting.
And I do have a question for you. We just briefly discussed this the other day. We haven't discussed anything that you and I didn't discuss?
No, it's all the same.
Okay.
One hundred and fifty thousand over.
Okay.
Yep. So do I take a consensus that we want to move forward with spending the money out of TIF?
Mm-hmm.
On this.
That'd be my recommendation.
Do, uh, if there's a motion, we'll have to do a roll vote.
Yep.
Do the amount of money.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Kiefer Brothers Construction and use the TIF monies to pay for the, offset the deficiency.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Roll call be, we'll start with Commissioner Meeks is absent. Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mayor Judge.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gould, and we look forward to working with you guys and on getting this sidewalk project done. It's been a long time waiting, and we've tried to get this sidewalk in safe routes to school twice and other ways, but anyway, it's, it's a good thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Sorry I was late.
Now. I'm seeing something real quick. All right. I guess that's him. Sorry. All right, we'll move Mr. Boyer to the end. Do we want to go ahead and talk about Dollar General?
You can go ahead and do that.
Okay.
Okay, you have your, this will be on, um.
This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-fifty-nine, which was the reducing of the parking space at the Third and Walnut for Dollar General. They made a request to reduce the required number of parking spaces from fifty-four to thirty-five. You have the drawing up there, the renderings up there, what the construction will look like, and Roger is here to explain anything on there that you need.
Yeah, if you take any questions, Roger Nuxall, Farmers Group, and we are in here to represent Oberlin Group and Dollar General. So, kind of ran through with the zoning committee, they're wanting to reduce, hey, Dollar General does several traffic studies on the amount of people that come into the store and what they perceive, what they need for parking. Usually, their max capacity per one hour at the store is going to be thirty-six people max, and most of those people, the clientele coming in there, are coming in and out. So the thirty-five is, they found is more than sufficient on the parking space, and it also tend to find, and the communities like this where it'll be around other businesses, they like the aesthetics of the more green space that the building brings with the, with the site design aspect of it. So those are the main points that get across on the parking lot.
So, I would, this went through the zoning board already. I know this is the first reading, but I was wondering if you'd consider waiving the second reading on this one.
Mike, and maybe I missed this in your email with the zoning, from the zoning board, but was it our requirement that they have fifty-four?
Yes, it's part of our ordinances in the physics A zoning, and it goes on, and it states that, like, each, each different type, commercial has a different requirement for the square footage.
Okay, so it's based on the size of the building?
For all, and for retail, it was, I think it's two hundred square foot to have to have a parking stall, over two hundred square foot. And so in order to reduce this, we would have to do the ordinance.
I'm just glad they're doing the projects, so I'm good with it.
I mean, if they did a study and they, they think it's fine on their, their end, I have no issues. I'm, I'm with Eric, like, I'm, I'm happy they're gonna do it.
We'll have, we'll have two Dollar Generals in Mount Carmel for the foreseeable future, so be very interesting and, um.
Need a motion?
Yep, we need a motion to, um, accept the zoning board and waive the second reading.
I'll make it.
Motion by Mr. Ike Meyer.
A second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Roll call, Commissioner Meeks, absent. Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. We're excited to work with you in the future on this.
Appreciate that.
All right. I'll go ahead and move to reports. I would like to congratulate the Mount Carmel High School Girls Golf Team for winning the state championship. They did an outstanding job. It was, you know, was it thirty-six hole difference?
Thirty-six stroke.
Strokes, sorry.
It was a lot, somewhere in that range, right, right now.
And they set a new state record at six oh one, which was awesome. They broke Alton Marquette's record from a couple of years ago, so, um, anyway, great job, girls. We're very proud of you. This Saturday, I'd like to invite everybody out to the Mount Carmel City Park. The Rotary is having a ribbon cutting on the new pavilion and the new bathrooms, and also we'll be unveiling several different projects that will be taking place out there that the Rotary is sponsoring, so hope to see everybody out there. Um, I'll let Chief McWilliams talk about the raffle. Also, if you've not been out on Oak Street, got a lot of stuff going on out there, but the biggest item out there right now, in my book, I can't remember back, in June, I believe, I congratulated you guys on buying the ugliest property in Wabash County, or at least the city. Jeff Guys White Incorporated has done a phenomenal job on cleaning up the Snap-on site, and we look forward to green grass being planted out there and mowing it next summer. It's simply amazing the transition that property has taken in the last two months, and, you know, it's something that we felt really to be done and cleaned up, and it's, it'll be nice, and hopefully someday it can be used for, you know, something that will be for the community. So that is my report. Commissioner Meeks is absent. Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you noted that Rotary was having an event this weekend. Kiwanis is having their annual pancake day on the thirtieth, Saturday morning, seven to ten. I don't know if I stole Mr. Turner's thunder. He's the president of Kiwanis now, but just thought I'd mention it in case he didn't.
I'm fine with that, Commissioner.
Back to the morning, last few years prior to when we had it, was in the evening, but it'll be a Saturday morning at the VFW, and so come out and have some Kiwanis pancakes and sausage. It's always a good breakfast for the community, and it's a free will offering, I believe. So that is, like I said, the VFW, seven to ten on the thirtieth. As far as the finances go, the past two weeks, we've had receipts of thirty, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight eighty-four, moving right along. That was, most of those were, you know, sales tax ninety-five thousand plus, income tax a hundred and three thousand plus. We're really ahead, ahead of budget on all those and then various other taxes there. But one thing I wanted to note, I know Mr. Turner, Mr. Gitcomb, and, and others have been working on getting rid of some, I guess I should say, unused equipment and scrap and a variety of things around, sitting around the city, shops and various things, and, you know, to date, they've raised almost forty thousand dollars getting rid of the stuff, and so I want to commend them on doing that, and, and that puts a little extra revenue in, in our side for, you know, new equipment or whatever we need as it comes up, but was just kind of sitting around and not being used, so I want to thank them for that, and that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ike Meyer. Commissioner Dogger.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me find my report.
Are you here?
Yeah, I'm here, somewhat. Um, here we go. All right. Over the weekend, we had a water line break on Pin Oak, and crews have been working on, on that all day today, and I have been in work all day today. And they just finished up. Thanks, Mike. So Water Department Maintenance was out there first thing this morning, getting that all cleared up. Water, Keith collected monthly bacterial samples today from the distribution system and sent them off. They did some maintenance at the wells, at the control panels at the wells to make sure that pests stay out of, out of there, because we've been having some major issues with that. Sewer side, there's the sludge, the sludge press was supposed to be completed today, but the water line leak caused that to be delayed, so.
We will be working on that tomorrow.
And it will.
Hopefully be completed.
Completed by tomorrow, end of business, hopefully. Terry Boyer is here today to talk about the accepting of the water plant bids and the loan extension, and then, Pat, I do have one question for you. I saw your email. Do you know when that Third and Walnut will?
No, I don't.
Okay.
And I, I just refreshed Doug. I asked him a week or so ago, so.
Okay.
Just refreshed him to try to get that scheduled, because I know.
Yeah.
Who knows, we need to get that done.
Sure. Okay. So Third and Walnut should be starting here sometime this fall. End of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Dogger. Commissioner Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mayor. October third through the ninth was Fire Prevention Week, so our fire department was very busy during that week. They had five firehouse tours, six school fire drills, and even took a truck out to Oakview for the residents to check out. Also, they escorted the state champion girls golf team down Main Street, and searched for a missing person. In addition to all of those things, they also had eleven calls in the last couple of weeks, so they've been very busy. There are applications still being accepted for the firefighter position. Those will be accepted until this Friday, the twenty-second. And then, moving on, the leaf pickup truck has started beginning its collection routes. It was out and around today, I saw it. The electronic recycling, we are planning an electronic recycling event. We'll have more information. It'll be, it will be next year, so people that get new things at Christmas, you know, we'll get you a date later, but we are in the works of planning an electronic recycling. And then, our current recycling has been moved. It's up and running. We've got some signs up that show that it's only open on Monday and Friday from seven-thirty to three-thirty, and then on Saturdays from nine to three. It also shows that we accept plastic and cardboard, so there shouldn't be any confusion on what we now accept, so. It seems to be working much better back down there where it is being monitored. There's not near the trash being thrown into the dumpsters that was previously.
Good.
Um, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimmerman. All right. Mr. Turner.
All right, we need to go ahead and make a motion to accept the changes on City Ordinance twenty forty-six. This will be, or twenty fifty-seven, which changes the city ordinance on twenty forty-six. This is the second reading. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks, absent. Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mayor Judge.
Yes.
And that's all I'm gonna have. I'm gonna pass it to, if it's okay with you, Mayor, if I give it to Mr. Gitcomb to go over the ordinance twenty fifty-eight, which is a vacation of South Mulberry Street.
Sounds great.
Okay, ordinance twenty fifty-eight. You have a rendering up there with the legal description.
That's on this one.
And.
Okay.
This is where a house was built on what would have been the flat of Mulberry Street. So to kind of clean this up, public utility purchased the house, but the property's still on the roadway. So they requested that we vacate that portion of it. They have given us all easements, and it's in that ordinance that, for the second reading on it, to where we could get to any water or sewer lines or storm sewers that would be in that area. But this just kind of clears up that house being on the city street.
Anybody got any questions?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks, absent. Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Dogger.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mayor Judge.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gitcomb. I'll come back to you here in a second. Um, Mr. Walter.
No report tonight, Mayor.
All right. Chief McWilliams.
Thank you. Just to fill in the details, what you referenced, we were fortunate enough, the police department was, to receive a motorized police car, operated by a powerless type, for little tics to, to get. It's got Police Department on it, Officer Pennington, the Mount Carmel Police Department decals on it, but it was donated for the department to raffle, with all monies to be, go toward shop, shop department for a leader this year. Quite frankly, the response has been overwhelming. Mount Carmel and Wabash County has greatly stepped up to the point where we've already, we've got our tickets picked up on, what, Friday around noon, and by Saturday, I had to order more tickets. So I think that the children in Wabash County are gonna greatly benefit from generosity of citizens. It's gonna be a neat deal. Any police officer has access to these, dispatch can sell them, City Hall is selling them. I think the mayor has some tickets still available. We have more coming in by Wednesday. So, but the drawing will be held on the twenty-ninth of November, Friday, and there'll be a few help meetings for the couple drawings, and tickets can be purchased for five dollars each, or five, twenty dollars. So I think it's, we, we're trying to do one.
And I've thrown a caveat in it, just for fun. I have challenged the police officers, instead of writing tickets, see how good you are at selling tickets. And the top officer or dispatch, I guess I gotta throw Judy in there because she's been really pushing those tickets hard at City Hall, will get a twenty-five dollar gift certificate here in town to a restaurant, so anyways, have some fun with it, so. Thank you, Chief. Chief Speth.
Then I have, or part of our will be applying for a small grant through the State Farmers Office, which is due this Friday, so we'll get it in next day or two. The maximum amount is twenty-six thousand dollars, so we're gonna be applying for some SEBA's and go from there until it happens.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Chief. All right, Mr. Gitcomb.
We had several calls over the weekend from Friday storm, and then of course, the water main break. So the guys have been out working, they work all day long on the water main break, and we had a couple of the. water main break, and we had a couple of the street department come and help, so we could finish that up. Mr. Brady and myself, we've also been working on some of the code violations, and we had a court date on one of them at twelve thirty-one Bane on the street. We've extended that out for another forty-five days, and we're working with the homeowners on these issues, I'll have more on that once we get those finalized on...
Okay.
End of my report.
Now, at this point, do we want to go back to Terry?
Yes.
All right. Terry Boyer, Donahue and Associates, welcome.
So, talking about the bids I've received for the water treatment plant, so on September fifteenth, we opened and rattled out bids. We got a total of five bids, so the low bid came in from River City Construction of East Peoria, second low was Kiefer, third low was Williams Brothers, and the fourth low was Locker, and the high bid was from Popcar Construction. So, the bids range from nine point six six up to eleven point seven seven. The parent low bidder, River City Construction, did fail to fill out their forms correctly, so that's noted as they were missing acknowledgement of the denim number five, and so that is, we did double back and check with the IPA, and that is a, I guess, a failed flaw in their bid documents. So, the bid we received from Kiefer Brothers Construction is, you know, they're qualified contractor, they do good work, and they're the, you know, they're responsive, responsible low contractor in this instance. So, should be noted, there were two alternates with the bid, they were competing alternates, so alternate number one was for additional peak humidification equipment, can't even say it too many syllables, and the second one was, alternate two, is to put specialized coating on piping to help it keep from sweating. That coating was super expensive, so we're recommending to go forward with that bid, alternate number one, which was for nine thousand dollars. So, that's, that puts the total bid amount from Kiefer Brothers at nine billion, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand. And so, the, what we like to do here tonight, if the council agrees, is to go ahead and conditionally award the contract to Kiefer Brothers, condition not approved from IPA loan section, and if that's the case, then we will issue or give you a notice of intent to award, and get that signed, executed, sent to the contractor, then we kick off our bid certification package with sending all that to IPA and get the whole loan process rolling. So, that's the nickel tour of what I have, are there any questions?
No, I would just say, with River City, it is, you know, unfortunate that they did not fill out the bid form correctly. Their owner has reached out multiple times to me and, you know, explained back, look, we're very sorry that, you know, we cannot accept any addendums in addition after the opening of the bids, and Donahue and I E.P.A. both agree with that. So, does anybody have any questions?
No, I would make a motion to move forward.
All right, do I have a second?
I know, I would make a motion to move forward with Kiefer Brothers Construction.
Okay. Good job. All right, roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks is absent, Commissioner Eichmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolger?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Judge?
Yes. All right, so moved.
Appreciate all your help.
Yes. Long time coming to get to this point.
And a long road.
Yeah, so... All right, so, Mr. Turner, we hit new business. Is that where we're ended up?
So, let's see. As far as new business, I'm not seeing any new business.
Well, just approval of consent agenda.
Okay, approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion?
I need a motion.
I'll make it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Commissioner Meeks, absent, Commissioner Eichmeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolger?
Yep.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
And Mayor Judge?
Yes. Does anybody else have anything that need to discuss, oh, that's right, Mr. Dallas, I forgot.
Very briefly, just give you a report on the status of the old district construction project. There's been a shortage of trucks, so the milling process has been delayed here a couple of days, or a few days since the sidewalk work has been completed. Spoke with Kiefer Brothers today, they're gonna finish cleaning up for the rest of the sidewalks and getting those washed down, whatever. Milling should start scheduled for this Friday, and Huff will be in here fixing cracks and so on and so forth on Oak Street a week from today, and potentially, I think it's twenty-nine, they should start resurfacing, that's the schedule.
And will we have that totally shut down while it's resurfacing?
I don't know if it's totally shut down, but...
Most of it, most, we may have some of it totally shut down when Huff is in there trying to do the cracks.
Yeah, because it takes a long time to...
I just was saying, like, we need to, we just need to make sure we let the public know way in advance, because that...
Yeah.
In addition to our emergency services.
We will get with the news media, let them know a little bit further.
That would reduce more than I thought.
Yeah.
The galloped head of the buses at the school and the police department and the ambulance service.
Is there still one section that needs to be concreted on Oak? Because it looked like they saw cutted it, but they never come back and poured it, or pulled it out and poured it?
That's outside the project limits, and they saw cut that for us.
Ah, okay, we'll take care of it later.
When do we get the asphalt here, we're gonna patch that glass off.
Ah, okay.
Give that a little place to grow, so we won't have those blowouts.
Yeah, because we're getting seam blowouts right now, so...
One quick reminder, you know, the news media's had it in there, I sent them a message about it, Thirteenth Street, from the alley of Franklin, to College Drive, will be closed down from seven to three thirty on Thursday with weather permitting. This is a hospital project where they get into a generator and some of the electrical work, so I just wanted to make sure everybody kept that in mind.
Okay.
And with the, we've had a few calls up here at City Hall, and I know the police department have referenced the signs, whether they be in the road or whether they're in the, in someone's yard, that's kind of your pre-warning that there's gonna be road construction, and those are not owned by the city, they're actually owned by Kiefer Brothers, so we really don't have anything to do with it.
Actually, the signs are not, they're actually tile paving signs.
Okay, well, or tile paving, yeah, they're not ours, so we can't move them.
And that's another reason, I knew that they'd been, that there'd been some people about seeing work being done.
Right.
But there was, there was the delay because, basically, there's no trucks available to do...
And what everybody needs to understa...
There's signs like on Mulberry and Market, and those were, those signs too?
What everybody needs to understand is, is once we award an engineering bid for construction of anything, the site that we award, like the roads and stuff like that, the contractors are in charge of as far as signage and stuff like that, and they're not gonna remove them until they're done, for safety of, you know, the workers and everybody else, so we appreciate everybody's patience, so... All right, anybody else? Got a few minutes. Go ahead, John.
Five minutes, that's the most.
Thank you, John. Real quick, I just wanted to kind of report on the Little East Parks Festival, which we pulled off through careful. We had people come in from Kentucky, from Kansas City, Evansville, Princeton, around here, et cetera. It was, it was wonderful, I really think we planted a flag, I was talking to most of the staff last night, we planted a flag, so now we've spoken to Bill Ford, we have press, we have pictures, wonderful video, and I just want to share something that's really sweet, there's a band called Amongst Vultures, which is a rock and roll band, and they look like lunatics, you know, they're hardcore, crazy guys, and after the show, after his set, this guy, they, they were, I believe, from Kentucky, I said, hey, Matt, thanks so much for coming out, you know, next year we'll do a bigger project, and he said, oh, we love playing Mount Carmel, it's such a charming little town, and I was like, okay, this might work, and we've got a warning that what's coming in general with the Little East Parks Center is Lone Ranger Days, so we're gonna get a big old Lone Ranger festival going, and I'm gonna personally start the fun to get a Lone Ranger statue downtown. We need to have a big horse and a big Lone Ranger right downtown, right? Metropolis has Superman, we got a Lone Ranger, you know, let's make some money off of it, okay? That's it, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, John. All right. If that is it, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I got major questions about this.
What about?
Kevin?
Jenny gets it, she has to hear it.
Okay.
I will come by first thing in the morning, I just got out, been one of those days.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Need to, no, that's the, that's what I thought.
To get things through quicker, but obviously, we're here till six every night.
Yeah.
Maybe tonight's actually early.
Yeah.